Good evening, this is Peter Casper. I'd like to call the Town of Hebron Selectmen Regular Meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Those that are in attendance, if you would join me in standing beside our flag.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Andy is on with us remotely, Donna?
I don't see him here.
Okay. Okay, Andy is not able to join us. He is, I expect to see him remotely, but he's got an injury he's attending to, so he is at home. So I will be deferring to Donna to help us administratively run the meeting. Donna, any additions or changes to the agenda at this juncture?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the board? You'll need to know now. Oh, and just also Claudia, we are we're absent Claudia at this point. Is she joining us?
She's joining.
Okay, so what we doing until later? Otherwise, we have full attendance. Okay, that moves us to Section 4 on our agenda, which is public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen. The Board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less, while the Board respects the right of the public to provide comment. This time is not intended for open discussion or Board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should make arrangements to do so through the Town Manager's Office, Board Chair, or frankly, any of our Board members. We're very happy to join you in a conversation at another time when anything you wish to have a dialogue about. If you are joining us remotely, please type "comment" and your name in the chat box, and you will be recognized. Donna, do we have anybody remotely that wishes to offer public?
Not right now, no.
Folks in attendance? Adam Heather now? No, okay. Obviously, for those who are joining us remotely, there's an opportunity for public comment at the end of our meeting as well. That moves us to Section 5 on our agenda, which is good to know and special recognition. We have a Small Business Week proclamation, Donna?
Yes, we do, and I believe Tiffany is going to read that.
Tiffany to read that, thank you.
I'm ready. Town of Hebron proclamation recognizes Small Business Week. Whereas small businesses are the engine of the American economy and the foundation of a free and prosperous nation, built by men and women who work hard, take risks, and believe in the power of the American dream. And whereas small businesses make up more than 99% of all private sector employers and create nearly two out of every three new jobs in America, fueling opportunity and driving local economies across every corner of the country. And whereas, whether in our fields, on our factory floors, or at the frontiers of technology, small businesses are driving the innovation and building the products that keep America strong, competitive, and secure. And whereas, in recent years, small business owners have faced unprecedented challenges from record-high inflation to reckless federal spending and burdensome regulations, yet have remained resilient in their commitment to delivering for America's communities. And whereas, despite these headwinds, the American spirit of enterprise endures, and we now stand at the threshold of a new golden era for small businesses, built on common sense, pro-growth policies that put our people, our workers, and our job creators first. And whereas, under strong leadership that prioritizes energy independence, secure borders, and fair trade, we can once again restore American dominance, self-reliance, and independence. And whereas, the Town of Hebron shares this administration's commitment to cutting red tape, keeping taxes low, and fighting for the hard-working entrepreneurs who power our economy from the ground up. Whereas, National Small Business Week has been proclaimed by the President of the United States since 1963, honoring the vital role of small businesses in creating jobs, growing the economy, and anchoring our communities. Now therefore, the Hebron Board of Selectmen do hereby proclaim May 4th through 10th, 2025, as National Small Business Week, and encourage all citizens to support small businesses and celebrate their many achievements. On behalf of the Hebron Board of Selectmen, the Seal of the Town of Hebron has been affixed this first day of May 2025. Signed, Peter Casper, Chairman, Board of Selectmen, and Andrew J. Tierney, Director.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Donna, that moves to Section 6 on our agenda, which is appointments and resignations.
Yes, so we have an alternate serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission, Tyler Kistner, who would like to move up to the spot that was recently vacated by Kate Wilcox. And then we have a new person who would like to be appointed. So we do Tyler's switch first, and then we can take care of Daryl.
Dan, would you like to read the motion, please?
Sure. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Tyler Kistner to the Parks and Recreation as a regular member for the term to run until December 2027.
Great. Motion's been read. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, or please note if you wish to abstain. Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Keith Bennett, aye.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. So that moves us to Daryl's, as Donna has mentioned, in the correspondence in the packet. Keith, would you be so kind?
Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Daryl Tietro to the Parks and Recreation Commission as an alternate member for a term to run until December 2028.
Thank you so much. Motion's been read. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, or please note if you wish to abstain. Joe Larson?
Dan Larson, aye.
Keith Bennett, aye.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, motion passed unanimously.
And then next, we have an appointment to the Land Acquisition Committee, and this is Adam Teely to replace the spot that Kate Wilcox had representing the Parks and Recreation.
Claudia, would you be so kind?
Sure. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Adam Teely as the Parks and Recreation Commission representative to the Open Space Land Acquisition Committee.
Very much. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, or please note if you wish to abstain. So Larson?
Dan Larson, aye.
Keith Bennett, aye.
Tiffany Teely, I abstain.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. The motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. I know your husband will be disciplined. You didn't vote for him, but it's okay. We'll keep moving with the agenda.
I'm sure he'll forgive me.
Yeah.
I think he'll forgive me.
Donna, that moves us to our Town Manager's Report.
So I did get a message from Andy that not, he's having trouble logging in. So I don't have his report.
Okay.
No, he was planning to give it.
Okay, so
Table that and come back to.
Yeah, we'll table seven on the agenda, and then we'll see if we can revisit that later in the agenda based on the technical issues that we are having. Thank you very much. And then moves us to old business. Economic Development Commission and our economic vision document. So we'll oh, they're here. The chair, this is your chair. Because you don't have to stand up and be grilled. You can relax and join us. And so we have been working, and obviously, thank you again for all your work. And we had, right before you came, the proclamation relative to small.
No, I'm sorry. I tried to get here.
Small business, no, 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 no. This is, you're not late, but the Small Business Week, so congratulations again on your award. The town is very proud of you. So thank you very much. All of you too, for our community. So we've been working on the vision report, and thanks to Michelle and the folks on our the mission to try to bring some synergy to our vision relative to economic development. And she reached out and obviously is looking for Board of Selectmen's coordination, cooperation, support, input relative to our vision of economic development. So together, we can work towards the greater good of supporting our business, attracting new businesses, and frankly, being on the same page with what we're trying to achieve, and then think about our policies throughout the community in terms of how they then support that vision. So I will turn it over to you, just to maybe provide a little recap of you made some adjustments and took some feedback and
Yeah.
Turn it over to you to find.
A lot of it was not, not for manor hope, but like, you know, just, just wording and making sure that we, that we included the right things and took out some of the things just to, to, to solidify, I think, everybody's general opinion of the vision document that we had first put forward. The changes were cleaner, and we, we made all of them, I think. And then Matt met with Andy directly and went through it one more time and got his blessing on it before we sent it back over to you, Peter. And so I think all of those changes that we had discussed at the last meeting have been addressed. And I basically feel like at this point, we're just trying to make sure that everybody is in and that we can say this is, this is good. We all agree, and we, we can keep moving forward within it at the EDC level.
I think one of the things that's good about a document like this is it's obviously a document that's a living, breathing document that over time will be just be adjusted, maybe strengthened as things go forward or change, or whatever it may be. But the idea that we have a working document that we can all believe is a good starting point for the vision going forward is that's something that we're doing, and we appreciate it very much. So obviously, everyone has been part of the original review and the comments that were provided, and then obviously, you had a chance to review the adjustments that were made. Is there anything questions? And again, we're, we're going to focus on the vision document solely today. This is not to take a detour, and I can have a development. This is really just, is this a good starting point for the document that provides the vision? Is what the intent is today. And then obviously, there'll be opportunities going forward to engage in broader discussions.
And I think my first step, once this gets passed, is going to be to look towards that. What we were talking about the last time is sort of that small business toolbox, or like the new business toolbox of like, how can we, how can we tap into all of our different boards and all of our different groups to offer some hand-holding? We, Matt and I did discuss right out of the gate, we are going to try to do a ribbon cutting that is from the EDC for Brick Cantina. May as well, there usually you don't do.
We have the big.
We have big scissors. Yeah, you've mentioned that we have big scissors. I know you're really excited about those. So we'll get some big ribbon and but I think that would be really nice to do maybe in a week or two after they've gotten through there. I know I'm, as I've mentioned, very good friends with Julie, and I know that they're currently just getting crushed on a daily basis, which is wonderful. So maybe once it once it calms down just a tad, she would enjoy doing a ribbon cutting with the EDC, and then we would extend that out to all of you in the
That's great. No, I, I was hearing all the good comments so far, so
So good.
We're very, very encouraged that she will be very successful.
Yes, yes. I'm thrilled that the community is accepting them so well.
Any, any questions?
No, I read the entire document, and I was very satisfied. I think it's very, very clear, concise, to the point. I am very happy with the doc.
The only thing I would add is the vision is great. But I would like to see more concrete items related to the vision, and that's obviously for discussion down the road. Make sure we just focus and keep striving towards deliverables.
Okay, but generally, the value, the core values and the general strategic goals, everyone's you're in alignment with at this juncture?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it. I, I think I'm already engaging in conversations with constituents, especially as we come up on the budget vote, that they, they want to see more of this kind of activity in town to offset the mill rates. So yes, I support this as a smart starting.
Good.
Yep.
Sorry, we're not going to have to grill you.
No, actually, it's been a day already. I'm really, I'm good.
Well, thank you for your leadership, not just in your own business, but obviously, the extra time you're taking to community and other businesses, and helping us frankly, be a better support network for the town.
Yeah, I think we've got a lot that we can do, and I think it's going to be going to be exciting. We've got, I mean, we don't have a ton of new businesses opening here, but we have a couple coming this year, so.
Well, when you see the sale, you see our pending signs, and you're looking at all that, and then obviously, her business, and you're like vibrancy and, and
Yeah. No, I think I'm good. And I'll, and Peter, you and I can kind of figure it out. I'm certainly happy to come back. We can figure out like what you guys may have questions on, or what you want to see from me. And I'm, I mean, I'm usually fairly available on Thursday, so.
I think the thing going forward that's going to really help the Board is you reminding coming to us in some regularity, whether it's quarterly, whatever it is, because in the business of the town, you might want to come back and say, hey, this is what we're doing. Here's some exciting things, some highlights, and then engage us, because if not, sometimes those weeks and months do pass.
Well, and I think you had mentioned that the last time we were speaking too, that one of the small businesses had opened in town, and people didn't even know about it. And I think as EDC, that would be a really for us to fill is to be able to at least report back very least, for segment, you know, what's happening, like what's going on? And if they have problems, you know, hopefully, they're going to and then we can relay them out to get help.
It's, this is really, this is really good work, and I think the public should be encouraged that the vision is, is the way it is, and the communication has improved, and there's a commitment to bringing this vision forward and supporting our, our businesses throughout the community and the growth of the community. So thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Awesome. So do we need to like, do you have to vote on this or anything, or is it just okay?
I'd also like to mention, remind, one of the reasons, and this was years ago, where we, I brought up, and we started the Good to Know Special Recognition. One of the reasons that we did that was to highlight, you know, new businesses, and it's at every one of our meetings. And, you know, so it'd be great to, again, get business owners, especially new business owners, to come in and, you know, it's literally like a five-minute floor where they can kind of sell their products, their services, and let people know that they're there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I mean, that's a great point, Dan. I mean, I wouldn't even confine that to new businesses. If we have a business in town that is opening up, you know, they're slightly altering their operations, or they want to focus on a new product or something, I mean, we love good to knows.
And that's such a good segue for us, because, you know, part of this project that we have is to build this business directory, which is of course, a massive undertaking. But once it's done, you have a communication tool piece that we've never had access to before. So now we have the option to send out a blast now to all of our businesses and say, we have a good to know segment at the Board of Selectmen meeting. Who wants to go first? And it's just such a good way to communicate, you know, we can do sign-up sheets for you. We keep lining you up a business every, every meeting, you know. They can, and that's all part of, of being able to communicate with them.
Yeah, I, I don't want anybody to feel left out just because they're not a new business. Oh, I've been in town for 20 years, and I don't get a, I don't get a good to know segment like.
Well, I mean, I think we're, we're, we're supporting the current businesses, and we're fostering new ones, right?
Exactly.
That's the goal.
Yeah, I, I want businesses in town to know that the Board of Selectmen fully supports them succeeding.
Yeah, I think that, I think that would be great.
All right, awesome work here, Donna.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We're going to finish up all business. I think it'll be relatively quickly, and then I see that Andy has joined us, and then Andy will revert back to the Town Manager's Report. So we're just going to finish up all business here, and then we'll go back to Section 7. So on Section 8, American Rescue Plan State and Local Recovery Funds Update. Donna, this is just, if there's no need for discussion, anything you want to share?
We don't have any. We're working on the projects, and we're reporting. We have to report to the Fed, so we will report. So that was completed by the end of April. Things are moving along.
Great, thank you. Next is the Department of Public Works Action Committee update, but I'll defer. We have a new business item associated with that action, and so I'm going to defer my any comments there. The one we moved to 90 on new business. So that moves us to, excuse me, 8G. Any other old business, Donna, that we need to bring for the Board?
Nothing there.
Board, anything?
No.
Okay, great. So that, well, as I mentioned, we're going to revert back to Section 7 now that our Town Manager has joined us. So Andy, thank you for going through all the technical challenges and some physical discomfort to join us. And so I will defer to Mr. Tierney to take us through the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize. I'm not there in person, and I feel the struggles of joining the meeting. Luckily, you can go to the website and go on and find that, but we're going to have to work on that a little bit more, because it's on my calendar and doesn't apparently seem to work most of the time. And luckily, my fist isn't through my computer, but here I am tonight.
Understand.
Happy and sad, and the aggression being gone. Under the Town Manager's Report, we are presently in union negotiations with the Public Works Department. They've decided to file a petition and join the Operation Engineers after a year of leaving the Ask Me group, and it took a year for them to you know, get out of that, and we filed, so we'll, we'll negotiate that. We've done it before. We'll do it again. So that's not a surprise. We'll, we'll, town's best interest at heart. And as you kind of stated earlier, we're moving forward on the ARPA projects, the lights, the skate park, the dog park well is, they've picked a spot, and the guy's going to come in and hopefully drill the well. And the material has been bought for that, along with the pickleball courts, supposed to start in a couple of weeks. We were hoping to get a little bit more millings from what was going on Route 66, but unfortunately, the people that are doing the milling hired trucks that were taking the millings instead of getting paid, so it didn't pan out like we thought, but we'll still be able to progress and do that parking lot. Hopefully, everybody knows the budget vote is the May 6th. Please get the vote out, or the note out, or both. And I'm trying to read my handwriting now. Oh, as you stated earlier, we have the New Mexican Restaurant open for business, which is a big, big to-do in town. We're going to try to work to make a connection from that back parking lot a little bit more appeasing to get to that area. There's a little, there's a little section, and we're going to try to help out as best we can. Because it had an overflow, at least even on the opening night. And we, you already had the Flower Girl, and congratulations, Small Business of the Year for the State of Connecticut, and then she's going to participate in the national judging. And I think there's something coming up in Branford, I believe, and I've been invited down there to promote her, so I think I'm willing to do that. And we had a bid opening for Hebron Elementary Roof that will be on Tuesday of next week. And we're painting a Horton House, and we continue to work on spring cleanup, curbing, grass replacement where snowfall damage has been done, and of course, starting to pair roads after the cold snap in the winter. And that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Very much. Appreciate it. That moves to Section 9 on our agenda, which is new business. Donna?
So Charter Revision Commission is here. Many members are here, and Heather is going to give a brief presentation, and then entertain some questions and answers.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for having me, Board of Selectmen. Thank you, Hannah. Thank you, Mr. Tierney. We are happy to present to you tonight. Before I begin, I do want to say a big thank you, actually, to the Charter Commission. We've been meeting for a year and a half now. Twice a month, most months. And it's a lot of volunteer work, it's a lot of time out of people's schedules, and they, they really dealt in and did such a wonderful job. So of course, Donna, the Vice Chair, and we have Michelle Goffier here, and La Girl here, Adam Ockburn, Jessica Stewart, and also Terry McManus, because he was here for most of, you know, a lot of the year through November of '24, so he did a lot of work as well. So in front of you, we have a presentation, but you should also have our disposition. I'm not going to go through that because it's 18 pages long. But it's set up to have the charge of the Board of Selectmen, our, the majority vote of what we recommend for each disposition. Then it has a section on there's one Board of Finance, we have one Board of Finance piece, then we have the public who wrote to us or came and gave comment, and then our, the CRC, the Charter Review Commission's recommendations. So that is for you to produce, but I'm not going to go through 18 pages tonight. But I have, we are happy to answer any questions. And then, of course, you have the Red Line Charter. But I will go through our presentation first. So the way that our presentation is of is we went through the charge. So there is 13 items that you asked us to specifically look at at the beginning, so that is what we did. I'll try to read it word for word, but it is a charter, so it's hard to not do that. But I will try my best to make this exciting. Okay, so. Thank you, thank you. If anyone could do it, it's you. We had a really good commission, so it was actually really fun, but you know, I'll do my best here on my own. I mean, they're here, so they can help me out. And of course, Donna. Section, so your charge number one was to look at Section 105G, which referred to gender language, changing references on our charter, the general neutral language to reflect like our current error, era, as other towns have done. So our Charter Commission agreed. So we removed any language in reference to gender throughout the charter, and we asked, we actually also changed the name of the Board of Selectmen to Town Council throughout the charter. And so therefore, councilors would be your new title. So that's exciting, right? Number one, we have Town Council, which is also referenced in statute. So it does also, there's Board of Selectmen statute, but it also references Town Council, so that that'll be a good segue. And the charge number two was a Town Clerk position elected versus appointed. So we did look at this. Fran did come in and speak to us about it. She also did wrote to us her disposition on it. So we did agree to make the Town Clerk an appointed position, however, appointed with a grandfather clause for the current Town Clerk. And then for termination, and this is not just a Town Clerk, but we can get to that later, because it's for all directors, and but for termination, if there's ever a reason to, the Town Manager wanted to terminate for any cause, it would require an affirmative vote of four members of the Town Council to do so. And so that was our recommendation on that piece. Just a quick caveat there, the Town Clerk, one of the reasons we did it was we, we did hear from the current Town Clerk, and because there's oftentimes people who are qualified, certified to be Town Clerks, but might not necessarily live in Hebron, so we wanted to, you know, make that available, if that's what we're looking for. So charge number three is Town Officers' General Election. That was Section 203, Review Term of the Office Start Date. So we were not in favor of that change, and I'll speak to that a little bit later, why. So I think you'll be fine, but we did make a change in regard to like how when you're sworn in, how that meeting would go. But, but we didn't make a change in that section. Section 4, you asked us to review the percentage of branch, grant match requiring a special town meeting approval. So we
Excuse me. I see Tiffany nodding her head, but I, I lost audio. I'm not sure if everybody else did. Just making a reference.
To commission our aging to five members and two alternates, so they are better established form, and also have alternates to fill in as needed. And then finally, for the Economic Development Commission, and Ms. Nicholson was here earlier, she came before the commission and asked if we would consider this change, and we thought it was a good addition would be to add language that after development, Economic Development Commission may include no more than two members, which may be non-elect or Hebron-based business owners. So we put May, it doesn't have to be. You appoint those members as the Board of Selectmen slash the Town Council. But you select those members, but she made a good point that there are some business owners that have, you know, the But you select those members, but she made a good point that there are some business owners that have, you know, that have good sense and economic development and also, you know, some you know, feeling about like bringing in business and might be helpful, you know, perhaps, I mean, I'm not like calling anyone out, but it could be the owner
You said cats.
Right, cats.
They don't live in town or the hardware store. They don't live in town.
Exactly.
But yeah, they're great neighbors.
Right. And they may, and they may, and we be looking for people and they're willing to do that and have a business sense and be able to be very helpful. So we want to add that piece. It's May. It doesn't say shall, you know, will or shall. So it is still up to the Board of Selectmen. Number eight was the possible consideration of water pollution control authority changes. I think that was brought forth by one of the Board of Finance members. We, they did, we did have both the Board of Finance Chair and a couple of Board of Finance members, the Water Pollution Control folks here. And I think they were able to have a good discussion about kind of like timeline and budgeting. So we didn't, we weren't in favor of putting anything in Charter to speak to anything to do with like the water pollution control guidelines for them. Bifurcation, number nine, bifurcation of town and local Board of Education budgets. We had quite a discussion on this. We we had a lot of research that we looked at. We heard from a lot of people, but we, the Commission was not in favor of changing it right now. It's keeping as is. Not in favor of bifurcation at this time. Number ten, the Hebron Board, so this charge is the Hebron Board of Education. Is a creature of the state per state statute, not a town agency. This needs to be changed on our Charter to be in line with state statute. The Commission was not in favor of changing that at this time in the Charter.
Do I ask a question on that? So just trying to. You're saying the Commission was not in favor of this required? Yeah, I'm just trying to get a little handle.
Well, that's my question too. I mean, if it's in state statute.
Uh, it is in state statute. I was just reading the charge because the charge came in like that. It is in state statute. Yes. That is, as it was a creature of the state, but the Commission thought that because in the sense of the Charter, it was considered an agency, whereas like we have one budget together, the buildings are town buildings. You know, obviously we have some responsibility as a Board of Ed to the buildings, but they're town buildings. So those are some of the ideas that are around that.
Not sure I personally agree with that, but I'll let you keep going.
I think.
That's just, oh man, I mean, state statute kind of trumps.
Yeah, I, I think just to clarify some of it is that it's the Charter is not saying that the Board of Ed belongs to the town and the town has the authority to abolish it like some other department. Like if we decided to get rid of Public Works, you know, or something like that, like you cannot by state statute get rid of the Board of Education. But we in the Charter consider it a town agency so that it's, it's lumped in with other permissions and things that are granted to, to town agencies.
It's both.
So it gives it.
Of the state and a county.
Yes.
So why couldn't we just add the language, but they're both? I mean, couldn't we just do that and cover it?
There's one place where this defined county agency. And that's really where, you know, the question was, do we include it there or not? And it is, it is a county agency. So nothing, there is no change to the way the Board of Education operates or if the town can control it in different than.
So the definition, as currently, we didn't change it in, as a town agency in the Charter says, town agency shall mean all the elected and appointed boards. Agencies, commissions, authorities and committees of the town, including the local Board of Education. So that's how the definition.
I feel like we're covering.
I just feel like we're missing something, but I don't know what I.
We should probably let her finish, but I don't, I'm not sure I'm entirely comfortable with beating against state statute. But anyway, sorry.
Number eleven, so was discussion, so the charge was discussion of a later certification date of the Board of Education budget to the town. So February fifteenth, this far too early. We had quite a bit of discussion about that. Because it is an early date. So what has worked well in last year and also this year is that we had the Board of Education, sorry, I have two hats on, trying to be careful. The Board of Education submitted a budget, a preliminary budget by February fifteenth, with the caveat that we would be able to change it as we learn more and hopefully be some reductions or if special education students, we might have to make an increase. But so we added the word preliminary actually to the Charter to cover that. So that way we can keep that date. So it helps the town and, and town manager and, and everyone make his budget or his or her or their budget. But it gives us the Board of Education, the caveat that they can still come back with changes and, and recommend recommendations later on. So we thought that was a good way to do it. It's worked well the past two years though. Work well going forward. Number twelve, your charge number twelve was consideration whether the sole authority to appoint new board members resides with the Board of Selectmen. Sovereign Boards, RAM, Board of Ed and Board of Finance may want authority to appoint their own members. It should be discussed. So we did discuss that at length. We did make a change in regard to the Boards of Education. So we put language in the Charter that the vacancies should, so will be filled with a Hebron and RAM Board of Education's consultation. So the Board of Selectmen will consult with, if it's a RAM Board of Education appointment or Hebron Board of Education, but will consult with the members of those boards for making the appointment. So we added that language up there. So that was the charge of the Board of Selectmen. I'm happy to stop there if you have questions or I can continue on.
One, the scenic road ordinance, did you want to discuss?
Oh, sorry. Yes, sorry. Thirteen. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Scenic roads, we're not out.
Well, no, it was just because it's on the list. Sorry.
No, I know. I apologize. So number thirteen, scenic road ordinance, consider the ordinance, chapter three thirteen, section three thirteen, three through ten, whether approval should be ultimately via special town meeting. We were not in favor of changing that. We would leave, like delete assets. So I'm happy to answer questions. Now we also have another section, Alfie is fast and facile. But on our recommended changes as well as we went through the Charter from that Commission. So not part of the charges necessarily, but recommendations we have for your consideration. Okay, so I have the sections to the side. I'm happy to say that if I need to, but um. So section three oh two B, we changed the town meeting. So I think currently it's twenty five people. So we changed it, which we had a great town meeting. So thank you to everyone that came out. Change it to one half of one percent of registered voters for a town meeting, which is about thirty seven people. It's just hopefully to get a few more folks involved and not have twenty five folks, I mean.
The wonderful suggestion was two.
Two hundred.
We had to.
So we, we agreed, the Commission on this change. So thank you. But I think, you know, we had a timing, I mean, well over that, I was standing over Lisa.
It was over a hundred. That was a great crowd.
So I don't think that.
I remember awful lot of meetings where even I personally went to the gas station, asked people to get, you know, fill up their car, swing in for five minutes.
The next change we are recommending through three F and I, I will say that I also want to thank Oregonado who came multiple times to speak to us as well as the assessor on some of these items as well. But we did make a change for any appropriation from the capital non-recurring expense fund to one percent. It was one half of one percent. And so we changed that to one percent. Three oh three G, so these are some financial changes. We changed it to two percent for the acceptance of any federal, state or private grant, which participation shall require the town to contribute funds. It was again, one half of one percent. So we wanted to change it to two percent to allow the town to enter into like, apply for grants and accept grants on behalf of the community. Or seven oh nine. This is what I talked about earlier with the town clerk. But we also added it for all basically directors or administrative positions, any member of, in a point, oh, sorry. This is speaking out. Any member of an appointed town board may be removed by a town council by an affirmative vote of at least four members of the town council. Sorry, got out of my sight. We have four votes all the way through the Charter for most of it to make sure not all party vote, to be asked, was how the Charter looked at. So seven ten, we did have a lot of discussion about individuals who may not show up for their appointed boards because it may be, it may be that they like vacated their seat and didn't let anyone know. However, it may be for another reason such as a health reason and they're not able to like reach out, you know, because they're having a health reason or a family emergency or some other. So we added language in there just to say prior to declaring a vacancy at an appointed town board. A documented attempt will be made to reach out to the member being considered for removal. So that would be either like from the chair or vice chair or the appointed board or the head of the board would reach out just to make an attempt to say, you know, we haven't seen you in a couple of months, you know, are you okay? Are you, yeah. You need to step down at this time. Eight oh one, the town manager shall appoint and may remove, subject to the confirmation of an affirmative vote of four members of the town council, administrative officers. So this same thing is just that in order to remove or terminate anyone, it would have to come before the Board of Selectmen slash Town Council for an affirmative vote of at least four. AFC is the same premise. This is in regard to the town manager combining positions. So you know, trying to maybe save money on the budget or whatever, but we wanted to come again, affirmative vote of four before your board. Eight oh five is in regard to the town attorney. We had some discussion about this and we are recommending to add this language that the town attorney should not have a personal or financial interest in the town. So there's no conflict. Or, or look at that. Nine oh two.
Do you have something? Yeah, just, I, I just have problems with, because I'm thinking we hire companies and they hire people. And I, I'm just looking at all the potential. It, it could be an attorney's spouse who may come from town, who may have relatives in town. So being able to do work for that company for the town of Hebron, I, I believe attorneys are obligated under certain rules that they have signed on to and accept. So I just, I, I don't think I'm in favor of that section myself. I think there's too many mousetraps that we could get caught with.
Will be the town attorney themselves. So if, if you're saying like, if they live here, their spouse lives here, then they probably live there. But I think we were thinking, you know, especially as the Board of Education, the Board of Selectmen, the town, the attorneys are usually RAM Board of Education are from big firms. Goodwin and Goodwin, they're in the stage. So they have a caveat of individuals who can work for a town or a board. So we were just thinking it would, it's potentially a conflict of interest, we felt, if they had a personal financial interest in the town.
I'd like to weigh in on that.
Oh, go ahead, Andy.
If you're, if you're taking comments throughout the presentation. It's my, it's my professional opinion that a town attorney, regardless who they are, where they live, already takes oath to make sure they don't have a professional or personal interest in, in decisions they make when they pass their legal bars. So I don't think that even belongs in the Charter. No criticisms of the hard work and the great work you guys have done. I just think that's already stated in their profession, but that's just my opinion. And I don't, I would love to hear an issue where that has been a conflict because I, I don't know of any and I'm, I'm okay.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I mean, we're spending maybe too much time on this, but I would agree. I think by definition definition, they have a clear delineation of what is a conflict of interest and what isn't. So I don't think it belongs in the Charter. It's sort of stating the obvious that they shouldn't have a conflict of interest. And by definition, in terms of their legal obligations, they can't buy, they can't have a conflict of interest. So it's already really been addressed in the nature of the, of their their contract as an attorney. So to me, it doesn't belong in the Charter, but I mean, that's.
I respectfully disagree. I, I think there's a place for it. I think whether you take an oath or not, I don't see what the harm is in including it in there, that this is what we believe as a town and this is how we want to operate as a town. I mean, absent of oaths aside, I don't, I don't see why it, it can't at least go to a vote by the public and see what the public think. I, I personally wouldn't have a problem putting that in there. So I disagree.
And I just would like to add to that. I don't disagree very, very at this point. I'm on the fence. I just want to understand the definition of personal or financial interest. What does that mean? Does that mean an attorney who lives in Hebron cannot serve as town attorney? Is that like a real life example of what we're trying to avoid here by adding this language? I'm just trying to figure out how does this apply to.
Yes. That's a good example. Yes, that would be a good example, right? Because they have a personal interest. They could, you know, potentially, you know.
Hopefully not.
The legal recommendation.
Right, yes.
From a tax perspective.
Yes, yes, yes.
So about owning property in Hebron or having a child that owns property in Hebron. Where do you stop the line?
I think, I, I think the intent behind it was that we have a code of ethics for town employees. But the town attorney is not technically a town employee. They're a contracted entity. So we wanted to have, well, at least, this is the thought behind it, is that you want to be able to apply a, a town-inspired code of ethics. I mean, I understand where Andy's coming from and you're coming from and Pete about, you know, the professional thing, but I've, I've also been in a situation where I've seen it from both sides, you know, as, as the CFO of the Teachers Retirement Board and serving on the Board of Education. Now, I went to my, my legal, you know, consultant and they said, look, all you gotta do is go before this public ethics board and declare that you, you know, are going to exempt yourself from any votes and you're, they'll approve you to serve in both capacities and you're good to go. So I could have continued to serve on the Board of Ed. They had no problem with it at the Teachers Retirement Board. But optically, from an optical perspective of the public looking at me, the, you know, very much involved and the person who ultimately makes a decision about the retirement plans of all of the teachers in Hebron and serving on the Board of Ed. I saw that as optically a conflict of interest. And at some point, it would come back to bite me. So I took the, you know, action of stepping down of my own free will to make sure that the public never questioned my integrity. Whether or not I had it, you know,
Right.
there was never an opportunity for them to question.
Right.
Then when you say this would be applicable to a broader sense, not targeted specifically to the town attorney, but to anybody who's acting on behalf of the town in any capacity, because it's not just the town attorney. And that could have a personal financial interest in the town by simply living.
I, I, I agree, but I think that, that the town attorney as a contracted service has a much deeper impact on the town than some other contracted services. But I agree with you. If we had some other contracted services, which were very impactful to the town, I would, as a member of the public, want to know. I would, as a member of the public, want to know that ethically they are conducting themselves in, in a good manner.
So, um, okay, so really a code of ethics associated with contracted, uh, services for the town. And more, maybe potentially more broadly addressed rather than, this seems very targeted to, to an individual.
And how of our, um.
All of our contracts have got that.
All of our RFPs, every time we go out for an RFP, a big, one of the RFP consultants, attorneys, financial advisors, any bids or any services, our code of ethics is included in those bid documents and they need to sign. They need to sign off on.
Yeah, I just, I think we're already covered. I just. I, I just, looking at this, I can see where this can create unintended issues, uh, things that we haven't, you know, brought up. We're creating an issue that I don't see as existed. You know, and I, and I, I, depending on how far out you go with this, it could affect far more. You know, you may find you may not get a, a legal firm to want even bid. Because they've got people that either live, reside, have relatives or whatever in town and they could all be saying, whoa, wait a minute. What are we potentially opening ourselves up?
Maybe the cloudiest point is, it warrants some additional definition. But anyway, nonetheless, I mean, we're not here to decide eight oh five today.
No, that's just our recommendation.
But no, we appreciate that and I appreciate the dialogue and, um, because it's clearly the, something that maybe the public needs to also think about more broadly rather than just, the hope is the public and I was gonna say, you know, they, they engage in the whole document. Unless anyone objects, I think we've made good points here, so let's move on.
All right, thank you so much. Um, so nine oh two A there at the bottom was, and we did, um, the Board of Finance was in agreement as well. Um, but we changed the date of the meeting because it was so early and it was before, you know, even the, all of us were really ready, um, the Board of Eds, the town, um, the Board of Finance. So we, um, changed the date to December fifteenth. Um, with the Board of Finance shall confer with the Town Council, the Hebron Board of Education to discuss school objectives. And, um, we added that they shall communicate a target for the following fiscal year, um, budget. But this target should be a non, non-binding in terms of preparation of the following year's budget.
I think the other thing that, what the other reason we got to change that was with the earlier timeframe, you could have a board that is on its way out by committing or making recommendations and then a new board coming in who are.
Yes.
Round by that.
Yeah. Um, nine oh five B, we just, we changed to two percent for the Board of Finance to make supplemental appropriations up to and including an amount. That's culminatively equal to two percent of the current year's budget. It was a one percent, so we, um, changed that to two percent. Um, or we recommended changing it. When I say change, I meant recommend, always been recommended. Uh, nine oh nine, uh, we're recommending a two percent, uh, uh, to change it to two percent appropriation of the current year's budget. Excluding the amount appropriated for the regional school district for public emergencies. Again, that was one percent. And finally, um, a title change, it's twelve eleven, so I don't really have to go through it unless you want me to. We, it's like transitional language because of the appointed town clerk and, um, other boards. But this is some transitional language there, um, I'm happy to read it if you'd like. But, um, in regard to changing that position, yeah. And the same with twelve eleven B, transitional language for the Commission on Aging Change. And finally, I would just like to thank, um, obviously I already thanked our commission and thank you for having us and for allowing us opportunity to make these changes and, um, but we, so we'd like to thank you. We'd like to thank the Board of Finance, the Hebron Board of Education, including the Superintendent Business Manager. Uh, the Regional School District, um, Ram, the Commission on Aging, Douglas Library Board of Trustees, Lori Granato, the Finance Director for the Town. Caitlin Shaw, we already mentioned her, Fran, um, our town clerk. And then, um, Suzanne, our sister who also joined us, also a member of the public who gave a lot of comment, um, that we did. Go through and that's in this transition document, like I said, the disposition document. Denise Sredosovich, Terry McManus, the Member of the Public and other Hebron citizens who've joined us.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good. So we're happy to answer any questions, we're almost all here. Or I can be done.
I had just a, a comment on a couple of things and first of all, everything I'm saying, I mean, thank you all very much. I mean, this is a tremendous amount of work and it's, it can, probably was tedious at times. I mean, the, the sheer, the sheer volume and the language and the, and each word is important. And, uh, it's really a, an opportunity to say thank you be, because on behalf of the public and obviously the board, because this is our documents, this is, you know, sort of the foundation of what is important to the town, even in terms of how we operate and it's so critical to have people that'll commit themselves to doing this. And it's, it's a lot of work, clearly, even just looking at the documents, it's an overwhelming amount of work and, uh, but you did it. And, um, and so thank you for all your time and your energy and your commitment to doing this. This is really, really good work, a testament to how things should be in terms of that small town, everyone coming together and trying to make it better. So I appreciate that. I, 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 just a couple of comments if I may, um, in addition to thank you so much, this is great work. Of the town clerk position and being appointed, I mean, uh, you know, being, not being voted on to me is, is, is a good thing, so thank you for bringing that forward. I, I, I struggle with, um, one, just again, throw my comments out and, and I'm sure there was talk quite a bit about when a board cannot make a decision on a member and it goes to town.
Oh, yeah. Did I miss that? I had it.
And, um, I. I appreciate, no, no, it's okay. I appreciate it and I, and, and all, with all due respect to our friends in Andover. I actually think it's, I don't agree with it at all. I mean, the board and sitting on a board, our job as board members is to make decisions. Making decisions, i- i- a part of that is compromise. Uh, and recognizing that, listen, we're at an impasse, we need to compromise because we're making decisions on the best interest of the community. Apparently, I, I don't know anything that's going on next door, but apparently it's not about what's in the best interest of the community. It's about what's in the best interest of maybe an individual or two. It's the only thing I can surmise from a distance, it's not criticism, it's just, just what I see from a distance. So, uh, shame on, uh, any board member who can't ultimately compromise and, and work together and, 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 and operate on behalf of, of the community, uh, themselves. And so you're in the position, figure it out. Figure it out, um, or, or don't serve. Um, and so I, I say that with all due respect, but I also, I serve. And there are times when I make decisions that would, I personally wouldn't make. But I, I make them in what I think is the best interest of those that I represent, which is the entire community. And that's what all of us, I think, have demonstrated, you have this board, it works very well in that regard, we compromise, all that. So I, I don't mean to ramble, but I'm passionate about the fact that that's, the board needs to make decisions, make decisions. And then keep moving and, and zero for seven is not really good, whatever, is it over seven over there?
But they just had an election.
It's not, it's not going well.
We, we, we shouldn't define ourselves by the ineffectiveness of another community and actually, uh, adhering to their charge. Um, we shouldn't define ourselves by that, so I don't think it belongs here. And so I understand why it's there, but I just, I, I don't agree with it. So I just wanted to throw that out there because that one was like, ah.
So it's my fault for not bringing that up, I meant to, um, bring that up and just for the public's, um, knowledge, so that was something we discussed, the Board of Selectmen, um, appointment and because of what's happening in our neighbor town. Um, es- especially is because the Board of Selectmen is the ultimate, um, authority in appointing somebody as they step down. Our commission was split. Right now, we have six members, we're three and three on it.
Okay.
And so I agree with everything you said personally. Uh, I don't want to speak for the commission on that, but I agree with what you're saying personally. The, the folks that, on the commission that maybe were for it and I, and I am one of them and I'll, that's why I'll speak for myself. Is, you're a great board, but you're not always going to be the board for it. And so if somebody steps down and you have a board that's split or not split, because actually Andover is not, not a split board in regard to politics. Um, but you have an inability to make that decision. It allows the town to kind of push forward. Andover had, had a petition done and then they went around, they had a lot of, so many people in town put a petition forward to make them have a special election to actually appoint it because it was almost, almost a year. Um, so the, what we had talked about was ninety days. If the Board of Selectmen can't make a decision in ninety days, then there's an issue, right? So it's not like it would go and, we weren't saying go rate to town meeting. Um, it was, if you can't make a decision in ninety days, you're not making a decision. Um, and it has nothing to do with your board, but as I said, the boards change all the time, right? And so then the other folks on the commission agree with you. Um, you're, so I, I understand, I agree with you that they should be done, but it might not be done.
Yeah, no, I.
You might not be on the board or any of you, right, in ten years.
Yeah.
And so.
About an hour.
So, but, yeah. Congratulations, buddy. I can't talk about that right now. So, but, you know, folks that agree with you, thank, uh, yes, you are elected as Board of Selectmen. You should be professional, you should be doing it on the best interest of the town. You should be able to make decisions and come together, even if you don't agree and say this is the best person for the spot. And so that, the other half of the commission agrees with you, so there's, there are those two.
That's very interesting, that's so.
We don't have a recommendation, like it's, it's, we're bringing it forward as a split thing for you to decide, to be quite honest, but those are the two thoughts.
No, there is.
Of course, the members are here.
Yeah, no, very good, you got to understand the whole place.
We were just talking about it. Yeah, it was a long time.
I understand, if the board is not, is not a, a well-functioning board, then clearly, you know, there could be issues. And then the town can save them from themselves. Um, and, and all of the board is doing what they're supposed to do or functions as we do here, you'll be faced with that shortly. The expect, expectation is that you'll figure out a way to compromise and collaborate and come up with something that at least everyone can easily live with. But right, if everyone hates each other and it's, you know, there's dysfunction throughout boards in our, in our, in our state and, um, it does give a relief valve for that. So I understand, I understand and I imagine it wasn't a ten-minute discussion and I, I understand completely.
It was a few meeting discussion.
No, I know, I just thrown out my, my four minutes and then, you know, and I, that's it. But I did, that's a, that's a very interesting, and so again, it's not one person's decision.
I, I totally agree with your philosophy. But looking at what could go wrong when things don't go right.
Yeah.
It's nice to have some sort of a safety valve.
Yeah, no, I think it's good discussion, absolutely.
It's a terrible thing to have to say that we may need a safety valve, but safety valves are when bad things happen that nobody expects.
And it's better to have it than to not have any at all.
And then, and then try to backtrack.
And try to backtrack.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's very interesting, this, I imagine there was very interesting discussion about it.
Some of us went back and forth, I mean, it's, it's, because you can see both sides, right?
Because then I think also, I'm like, okay, I get it, I mean, there's, there's good points on the other side, I get it. And then also think, well, if you don't have any courage, you'll say, well, let the town decide. Okay, well, as a board member, you're supposed to decide. And so I'll, I'll just wait and let the town decide because I don't want to make a decision. So I think the dialogue, I'm sure at times, is pretty interesting. You know, because I think it, I could, I could understand both sides clearly.
I, I, I've served with, with board members who were against anything that any of the rest of the board wanted to.
Just some principles.
Just on principle.
Yeah, alright.
I, yeah, I remember those years.
I know, it's just, I don't like to think about it, I like to think everybody's here for something other than their own agenda, but sometimes that's not true.
I would like to say, um, a thank you to Donna and Heather for the amount of hours that they have been preparing documents for us and, you know, Donna especially with her expertise and knowledge walking us through so many things that we didn't understand. Hannah, who never made a mistake in our minutes. Thank you very much, so I just want to thank you guys, but you guys did a lot of work.
It's great, it's just great work, so, yeah, it's awesome. So thank you so much for doing that. Do we have, um, anything else from, to talk to these folks about?
Just a, just a couple of comments if I'm allowed.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks for recognizing Mr. Chairman. And I couldn't agree with you more, what a great job and undertaking the committee has done and it's been done, I think there's at least three, if not four charter revision, uh, reviews and so it's been great. Good learning experience, so there's just, just a couple of comments, uh, as the town manager myself, not going to be here forever. Um, one of the issues that was discussed was about a board member and being absent, what, what can be done to them and that's, that's a really, a- as the committee probably knows, that's a fine line, what you could do, you can, you know, if they're an elected official, you can, you can send them a letter, you can, but you really can't dismiss them, that's if they're elected by the, the town. So I think it was like seven oh nine or whatever, so I just want to make that clear, we gotta be careful with that. There's only so much you can do, it's nice to have language and if that's the intent, that's fine. And then I think another comment that I would have. The Board of Selectmen is policy and procedure, which everybody well knows and they're doing a great job at it. And I think in the charter it calls out who are the, um, the, uh, officials in the town underneath the, the town manager. My concern would be, and like I said, it's not my personal concern, but I'm not going to be here forever. But i- if you're adding more than what's already there about four more people to dismiss somebody as an employee that's appointed, that could make it a political situation, which Hebron has not been very political. Where you have a town manager that you have to have just cause and the handbook lays that out. So if it got political where somebody was friendly with three or four people on the Board of Selectmen and the town manager was having difficulty with the performance in their job, that may cause a conflict, I don't see it, I don't know of any to, to point a finger at, I just, just want to make sure. I don't know what the change is from what it was or what prompted that to, to this. I know it lays out certain positions in the town where that calls for, I'm not sure if they're adding more to that or not, but just want to point that out. And then once again, um, as the town manager, I think uh, the town attorney that regardless of who it is or where, what firm they're from and not presently who we have. I just think, um, that might tie our hands, uh, and the reason I'm stating that is there's a lot of history with past cases that are continuing, new cases with Lebanon that are going to continue. Not that things don't change and that can't be handled differently, but there's a lot of continuity there, we hired the firm, as Danny said, and we do a multiple attorneys from the firm. The, the attorney we have now is from town and I just, I don't, I know a lot of people in a lot of towns, I just haven't heard of a conflict that, that was an issue. So I would just be, I think that would be more harmful to the day-to-day activities to the town, not, not sticking up for the, the firm or the person, but I just want to make sure that we're doing what's in the best interest of the town of Hebron in, in what we do, so that's just my opinion as the town manager, hopefully that carries some weight.
Thank you.
I just want to, just for, I just want to make one point for clarity. Um, in regard to the reach out, um, it was just on appointed boards, not, not elected. So we're just saying for appointed boards, if there's an appointed board, a member, um, wasn't showing up regularly, just that somebody from the board would reach out to them before putting forward a recommendation.
Okay.
Uh, to remove them. So I just, it was, I just wanted to share.
Okay. Okay. Alright, awesome work, thanks for presenting.
Thank you.
Sitting in the hot seat.
Thanks, Donna, for everything.
Do you have something else?
Uh, just, you know, and, you know, to me, it's always been a Board of Selectmen, been a Board of Selectmen since I've been here for forty something, for almost fifty years. I, you know, where I'd get a date, no. You're doing that only because of the trying to remove any kind of connotation of.
I think for equity, like in quality, right? Um, I think, you know, it's a little antiquated, um, Google Board of Select. And then these, what the picture.
This is not a. This is not a current, this is.
Okay.
So, and, but town, town council has a statue as well. So you can be in town council, that's why we, we made sure. So that's in, um.
There's going to be any cost to that, to change? I don't know.
Letter.
I don't know.
We don't print letterhead anymore. It's probably like, um, if, there's going to be a lot of things that will need to be changed.
Administrator.
But most of it's elect, most of it's elect.
Uh, yeah, by its nature, back two, three hundred years ago, select men is.
I mean, the, the charter itself was, you know, we removed the word like masculine, like there was a lot.
The masculine was the feather and the feather was the.
Yeah, I mean, um, the commission felt like we really should, uh, we're looking at removing all gendered language. It really should be a town council. All inclusive.
And I, I think it's a great idea. I mean, select men by its definition is antiquated, so and a little insulting potentially at this, at this day and age. So, but I get it, history, right? I mean, that's what it was since forever, but.
That's true.
So people can decide if they want the history to continue or they want to move forward. But I, I appreciate the, the work to, to make it more modern. So, all right. So, um, we, that moves us to nine D, which is actually is a, a motion associated with scheduling a public hearing for the charter revision. So Tiffany, if you please.
Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen schedule a public hearing on the first draft before of the Charter Revision Commission to be held on Thursday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. Just prior to the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting. Public hearing will be held in person with a virtual option.
Oh, she hasn't read. additional discussion, do we need to bring her back?
Well, maybe.
Maybe. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead. I don't mean to be.
I have some, some logistical questions. Um, we'll have the public hearing. Then the document comes back to the Board of Selectmen for uh, review and approval. And we can do that at individual, like line items.
Yes, the public hearing is on the Charter Revision Commission's recommendation. After the public hearing, then the selectmen can make any changes, recommendations. You could meet again with the Charter Commission if you have questions or want to discuss anything. So then you sent, you make your changes or recommendations and it goes back to Charter Revision. They have one more go at it. They can accept your recommendations, reject your recommendations. They send it back to you. The selectmen have the final say of what is in, what is out, what gets changed, what doesn't get included. You have the final say. And somewhere in all of that, we also do need to send it to the town attorney.
For her review.
Right. Before it goes to, you know, it get, then it will get filed with the town clerk and prepare it to go to the reference.
So when you envisioned this, what was your expectation of when the process would be completed? In terms of a night, you're sort of saying, hey, let's get it done by June or is it this November?
Well, we have to get it to the town clerk. This is off the top of my head. I think it has to be to the town clerk by September.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So over the summer, you'll be.
Okay.
It'll be.
Here's the schedule, we can send you the schedule.
Yeah, I forgot the schedule.
The schedule is in your.
Oh, it is. Okay. I didn't, I don't remember. I didn't.
And we tried to coordinate the schedule.
September.
The timeline dates and the schedule dates might not be exact because we lined it up with meetings existing already.
Yeah, that's, and, and that's kind of where my comments are going to be.
Yeah, did you? Yeah, no, I'm also, I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to lay down some of the procedurals of.
Yeah, cause I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the public hearing being before our next scheduled business meeting. But I feel that, that this subject matter is not conducive to a business meeting environment. I think that there should be a special meeting where we focus on this because.
Workshop.
Uh, yeah, a workshop, because this is going to take up hours, that business meeting.
Right.
Like, we don't want to be here till eleven.
That's a good idea.
No. So I, I mean.
You don't want to be.
No.
Uh, no, no, sorry, I'm going to opt out. I don't have life.
I agree. So that's a good suggestion. So.
Yeah, I like that.
Did, in terms of a workshop, how does that fit within, thanks for coming? How does that fit within the, uh, schedule since I didn't remember to look.
Here we can fit it in.
We'll fit it in. Okay. It's a good idea. Good idea. Sorry. No, no, it's a great idea. I mean, it's.
Yep.
Allows us to focus on it.
So it'd be in the later part of May. Before, before.
So you get the public's, uh, feedback and then we'll, and that comes before then, that'll be good reference for, for the board and then bring it to a workshop.
Okay.
Sounds good. Good idea. Additional discussion. Hey, all those in favor, please sit nearby by saying aye, those opposed, nay, or if you're still abstaining, please note that, Mr. Larson.
Uh, Dale Larson, aye. Each petted, aye.
Tiffany Teely, aye. Claudia Riley, aye.
Richard Kasper, aye. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you again very much for the work and the time tonight.
Thank you much.
Okay.
Okay, this is the award of the contract for the architectural services for the new D P W facility. So as you know, that did get the funding for phase one. Did get approved at the special town meeting last week. And we have a recommendation from the building committee to award the contract to Silver Petraselli.
Okay.
And I now and Rich are here to.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll read the motion and then open it for discussion. And obviously if you want to provide some additional context, it's always helpful. Um, so I'll read the motion, get that on the table. Who that the Hebron Board of Selectmen award the contract for the construction to build a new Hebron Public Works Facility at five fifty old Colchester Road in the amount of one million five hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars to Sil- Silver Petraselli and Associates of Hampden, Connecticut, of which seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and nineteen has been appropriated for architectural and other related professional design services. And the appropriation of the balance of the contract amount being contingent upon a successful referendum vote fund construction phase of the project with, uh, energy, town manager authorized to sign necessary contract documents. So that is the motion. So in terms of a additional, uh, discussion, Richard, did you want to provide any, uh, uh, any additional information? Uh, you don't have to, but in terms of sort of what we're kind of, how the process is going to work relative to this vote? Or do you, I mean, you don't have, I mean, I'm just opening up the mouth. If there's any comments from you guys, just to open up the discussion if there is any. Welcome to sit, yes, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good to protect.
For the record, Richard Steiner, three thirty west street. There is one thing that I did fail to share with you, that Silver Petraselli is not new to Hebron. Actually, they were the lead architect engineering firm on this water, water, the lead, lead pipe.
Remediation. Okay.
Now created the building committee. It was this long, it was domestic water lead abatement program. And it was one of the first programs that was undertaken in the state of Connecticut. So periodically Mal and I, and also Silver Petraselli had questioned municipalities, other architects, where that had become an issue. And so they come, look, look to us, uh, how did you pull it off, uh, at Hebron, uh, Hebron? They, they, they've worked with, now myself, I'm more with on that, that project along with, uh, superintendent, uh, up here. So, um, they're not, they're not strangers. Um, but answer your question, Mr. Chairman, um, you know, there has been discussions between myself and Silver, kind of getting them geared up. Obviously they're, they're waiting for this milestone to be achieved and the issue was the contract. But we, we've talked about what, and agreed, and I'll share that with the, at the next D P W A C meeting. That really the first thing is, is to really do site environmental building assessments. We really need to know how much asbestos, lead, mercury, PCBs inside the building we need to deal with. But just as important, what is underneath the site during the phase one environmental assessment? And that'll kind of, really kind of set how much of the budget is going to need to be consumed with remediation. So, um, and very clearly before in design work starts, we need to complete that, all of those tasks, which are monumental, monumental, involves a number of, uh, disciplines will be undertaken.
Did you remind the, the board in terms of the timing of this first phase? The expected time that it's going to take the firm to get through this initial architectural and other related design services?
I think I want to be very cautious because what they discover, Silver Petraselli and all of their cadre of consultants is going to really dictate how much time is going to need to be consumed, say, in the schematic and design development. You know, if the site is not as tainted as we all perceive it to be, that's one thing. But if it turns out that the site has got some really environmental issues, it might consume more time, more discussions with the state of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and possibly with that. So they don't want to commit to a timeline. That's going to really dictate a map of the schedule. But, but, but in the first phase, really kind of finding out in detail what we have down there by, by Colchester Road.
On, on the piggybacking onto your question, what are we looking at for a timeframe to get some of those answers, just to get an idea of, uh, how long it's going to be before the next phase of this? In other words, they're going to do test borings, they're going to get results. How long before we know what the results on that end of it are?
I think the turnaround time when they, when the, the different tests are going to be pretty, pretty rapid. That's one of the reasons candidly, even in advance of a formal contract, I started the, the initiative on behalf of the town and the building committee to start to dialogue with them, get their staff and all their sub consultants kind of lined up. In a way, it's kind of a good time for the intrusion of design professionals. Most of all, of course, the personnel are out in road work away from the facility. So different story if it was in the middle of winter, when the plow trucks were there, it was constant maintenance. And so if the timing is in that aspect is working, and that's kind of why I kind of initiated and kind of shared collaboratively with Silver Petraselli. Matter of fact, I was on the call this afternoon with, um, the project team and saying, um, I, I want you guys to tell me what you envision. And it was coincidental, exactly what I'm partying to for this election. It's this whole investigative phase that's going to take the precedent for a design, a discussions in depth, discussions with Paul, Boris, Aaron Morton and the staff over there really need to know what, what's hidden over there. We know what's obvious, but we know, we need to figure it out.
I, I think to your point then too, it's going to be critical for the, the communication committee to be communicating to the public um, about the timelines, when information's available. You get the public saying, okay, great, we just approved this money. When is it, when is it coming to referendum? So I can vote. So we got to make sure that there's that dialogue. Um, so the public still is engaged in the process and feels like we're moving, you know, as fast as we can without, uh, being reckless. And so, um, I think that's, that's going to be a challenge too, to make sure the public sort of doesn't lose sight of what we're moving on, so.
And that, that will be ongoing as developments come from Silver Petraselli and their, their associates. That is something that we need to do to keep the town informed as to how it's progressing, what they're finding, uh, the possible implications or the definite implications once. You know, all, all I wanted to get in is, uh, Richard's the expert when it comes to the actual construction and project. In terms of what you're voting on tonight, you're voting on dollars. Uh, those dollars are the total contract from, they, they walk in to the day, they turn the keys over and we have a new facility. We were protected and your motion talks to it, but we will also have wording in the contract that says at any time, due to any unforeseen reasons, this project can stop. We're only responsible for what the services that have been provided. So though you're, you're approving, uh, an amount one point five plus million dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, concern came up at the meeting of what happens if you find something? Well, if we find something on that site that is a, a showstopper, then we stop and we're responsible for the services and the uh, activities that have been provided. So that's what you're, you're safe in approving the whole thing because the contracts will protect the.
That, no, that's a great point. Uh, because that's a lot, you know, it's, it, it gives you peace of mind in knowing that if something really is a showstopper or not, like, oh, we just spent one point five seven six million dollars of taxpayer money and we got two hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of services. Or, you know, so that, thank you for sharing that.
I mean, in, in, to, to Danny's point, besides doing test borings, they're going to do radiographic, uh, ultrasound, uh, sounding across the, the area because we all know ground penetrating, ground penetrating radar. Because we know that things were buried there. We know, and you've heard Paul's talk about sinkholes come up here, there and everywhere. We find something there that's a showstopper, we're done.
I was going to say, you know that it's a sand-based lot and sand ships. So you may find that you may not be able to get a, a satisfactory, uh, footing.
Yep.
Load ability there.
Well, we did, we did talk about that. Uh, I think the comment that was made was we can, we can stand a building anywhere. Uh, it just depends how much you want to pay for the.
Yeah, we did ask the question, can you build on a cap landfill? And the answer was yes.
Yes.
But it depends on how much money. Yeah, yeah, you can.
Yeah, but that was a good point.
Yeah. So, um, just a, a, a comment, I, it's just an opportunity again, like we did with the Charter Revision Commission to thank you, uh, for all your work. It, it's, this is an example of what a, a, a few people can do to make a difference in our community. Um, and, and you guys, a lot of the work you've done in the building community over, over so many years with so many projects in the background, um, in, in essence to the public, because you're in the background providing all this wonderful information for then boards to take action on. But without you, it, it's very difficult to move all these projects, sort of rely upon, uh, the generosity of our volunteers to bring your expertise to bear, to help the community. So this is another example, just having myself served on it, just in sitting and wa- and watching and listening. Um, it, it, I gained a great deal of appreciation for, uh, the commitment that you made to better our community with all these projects, whether it's the roof and, you know, the ghillie, but whatever it is, there's a million, I've been here twenty-seven years. So all the projects that you guys have been part of. So just an opportunity, thank you again for all your efforts. Really appreciate it.
And the last thing that people that weren't at the public hearing may not have heard, um, we always look for low bid and we're dictated by law to take the lowest qualified bid. In this case, we got a company that we've worked with before, we know are reliable and they were the lowest, lowest bid. So anybody that thinks that, or, or has a question as to, uh, are we within the operating procedures of the town and the state? Uh, we are.
Well, and it's, it's very interesting because I, I was from the, I'm from the private sector and my philosophy is let me, let me say everything upfront and I'll make a decision. And, um, thank goodness you, you know, said, okay, that's not a great idea. Um, and so, uh, the interesting part for me was everyone selected them before we knew how much they cost. And so that decision was made. Then we opened the envelopes of, you know, from an expression, opening the envelopes, and they were the lowest bid. The decision was made prior, so that was the best firm. And, and then it was like, okay. So, and, and they were, but it's not the approach that I thought about, because in the world that I come from, we wouldn't have taken that approach. But in listening to the outcome and it being part of it, clearly it was the right approach. So the public can feel confident that the decision was made for all the right reasons and we abided by our charge as well. So, uh, good work there.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, the other, anything else? The discussion for the board?
Uh, I just, I, I just would like some clarity on the language. I mean, I understand what Mal is saying that, you know, we've awarded the contract for construction, but the way this motion is being read, it makes it sound like the total value of the contract is one point five million for construction. I don't know if we need to put phase one in here or if we need to specify architectural and design services. But the way it's written out right now, if I was the public reading this, I would think that we're building a new facility for one point five million.
Oh, you mean it turned the whole facility?
Well, it says.
It says for the construction, the build instead of.
Right. It should be designed. Say phase one or, or.
Somehow delineate.
Yes, that this is the first in a line of increments of money.
You could also define it as soft services, meaning not construction, but supervision during, um, I mean, you don't want to get into all those words in a motion, but this is not for the physical construction.
That's a good point.
Yeah. So if we, if we added, um, for the design professional, for the contract for the design professional before the word construction? This, this motion was. This, this motion was prepared by the town attorney.
I was gonna say, this was run by the town attorney.
For the contract for the design professional.
It says for professional design services.
Right. After, after the dollar amount.
Could we just bump that? Would you be comfortable bumping that up?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with Donna's thing of putting it in between contract and construction. If we say award the contract for architectural professional design for the construction to build a new. I think that, that puts like a phase one kind of thing, you know what I mean? I, I, I just worry, I mean, I understand that the town attorney is saying that it's in there later, but reading it as a member of the public, not you know, illegally, it sounds like, we just, we just got a building for 1.5 million.
It's a great deal.
Oh no, I was gonna say, being contingent upon a successful referendum, vote to fund, it should be the construction phase of the project.
Yeah.
So that should be in there too, for proper English.
If, if I may, if I may jump in Keith, great point. And I just, I feel the need to reiterate this is this is why we send the, to pack it out early before the meetings. If there's comments like that, we could have these clarified before the meeting. So if, if you see it.
I apologize. I, I looked at it quickly and didn't walk through the motion like.
Not a criticism. I just, I just, I'm just trying to help. I'm not trying to call you out on it. Just we, we, that's the reason we send it out. Cause a lot of times it's really a struggle to get the information prepared by the Friday that we send it out. And we had multiple conversations with the town attorney and Donna and I both struggled with this ourselves. So any, any help would be welcome is what I'm trying to say. So thank you.
And I focused on that. Well, you picked it up. I focused on the numbers and I wasn't necessarily.
Well, that's when, when I went through this the other night on my phone, you know, I'm going through it quickly and I looked at the numbers. I'm like, yep, that all looks good. But then I was sitting here as you were reading it and I'm like, wait a minute, that sounds kind of funky.
So after the, so we could make a friendly amendment and, and vote on it with the caveat that it will get reviewed by the town attorney just to make sure that we do that.
I, I, I'm, I'm fine with however you want to handle it. I mean.
Just think it needs to be very clear that it's not 1.5 million for for the total construction.
So you want to award the contract for architectural design associated with the construction?
There we go.
Yes, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Is it also site survey and testing?
Yes, but within that design.
It's all, it's all, it's all wrapped into the.
The design work.
A one, two.
So Donna, so if we move the Hebrew Board of Selectmen or the architectural contract for the architectural design associated with the construction of building a new Hebron Public Works facility at 550 Old Church Road and the rest of it, leave it as is. So yes, few words get changed. Or did you, I know you always get it.
She had it five minutes ago.
Okay. So yes, she's like, let's go, gotta go. So I think that's good, Keith. And again, Andy, it could be reminder that, you know, maybe we need to slow it down while we're all looking at these.
Yeah, I, I need to stop looking at it on my phone while I'm.
No, my, my, it's all good. Please, please don't take my comments as a criticism. I just don't want them to come across as it's two different contracts. It's one contract for that amount of money, but it, there's a phase in it and we've, we struggled. Donna can speak to it. We struggled several times how to word this because of just that. So I just want to make sure we're not doing something we shouldn't be doing.
I, I, I agree. I agree.
So we're comfortable with that friendly amendment on the motion as read or additional discussion. Okay. Based on the motion with the associated friendly amendment, we're going forward to a vote. All those in favor, please sign above by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain.
Uh, Dale Larson, aye.
You've petted aye.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. The motion passes as noted. Thank you so much. Great discussion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay.
We'll keep you informed.
I know you're right. Thank you. So we have the draft of Jennifer May 15th, 2025. And any other old business, Donna, Randy, now that you've. Anyone wish for the board? Anybody on the board? Or anyone? So I'll, I'll bring the, what, uh, my situation, which is not new, but I, I am resigning from the board and I've given my letter to Donna tonight, which she'll present that to the town clerk. It will be effective May 5th. Monday gives me an opportunity to work with Andy tomorrow to clean up anything that maybe I had outstanding for Andy. And that's associated with a move I, my wife and I have sold our home after 27 years in town. We have consolidated our huge number of homes we own, which is two, down to one. So we have, we're transitioning. And as empty nesters, we're transitioning, we own a home in Westley, Westley, Rhode Island. Which is a third of the size of the home that we owned in Hebron. So that's a bit of a challenge. But nonetheless, we are transitioning to Westley Rhode Island for a number of personal reasons. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you for the privilege of being able to serve with you because it's, it's a great board in terms of our ability to collaborate, have good dialogue, to respect each other and to help conduct the business of the town in a way that hopefully makes the public proud of the fact that they voted for each and every one of you to represent them. I've had the privilege of serving on a number of boards and I think of all the kids that I've coached over the years and and I, and I really will always keep Hebron in my heart as a wonderful place to raise a family, wonderful schools. My, my kids, I've got my fourth one is graduating next week, so I wouldn't be here at next week's meeting. And I think of what the Hebron schools did all the, all the way through from elementary through middle and high school. And I'll prepare them for college. They actually did better in college than they did in at Ram. Because of, you know, I think of the grades, you know, when they're actually getting grades because, but how well they were prepared to meet the challenges of their next educational journey. It's testament to the teachers and the volunteers and, and all those that helped them in the community. So I appreciate the opportunity to, to volunteer and to serve. I appreciate the time that I've got to spend reaching every one of you. But I, and I actually, I asked attorney, town attorney, can I stay? Cause I really wanted to finish. Because I just love being able to be part of this. And he reminded me as Donna did that. I'm not a resident anymore, so I can't say. So nonetheless, Donna has prepared to thank you. Cause it was a privilege to, to be part of this and be part of our community. So I have gratitude and thanks. So I leave it at that and Donna did prepare. What a red motion, whatever it's a motion, I will not read. But I will look to someone to, to read that. And so it allows us because the town government continues and this should be the testament to the, that thing I was rambling on about before, it's been four. Decide on one. So we'll see if these people are as good as I think they are. But nonetheless, it's an opportunity to, to remind ourselves that good governance continues. And people come and go, but at the end of the day, if we're all committed to a better community, then the business of the town, if even continues. And so thanks to Andy and my letter, Andy, you'll see thanks to you. Thanks to a great town staff. Thanks to Mr. Larson for supporting me as I took over the, the position of chair. And so I will look to a member of the board to read the motion as before you.
I'll read it. Moves the Hebrew Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Peter Casper from the Hebron Board of Selectmen with regret. And thanks for his many years of dedicated service. Further, that the select would designate Friday, May 9th, 2025 as the posting date for the vacancy notice. The 35th and final day by which nominations shall be received is Friday, June 13th, 2025.
Great. Motion's been read, discussion.
It's been great serving with you. I, I'm happy and glad that you are moving on and, and going to be able to retire near the ocean, which has been your desire and dream. A little envious that you're leaving us and some of us are stuck behind.
Hey, for the record, Nine Cove Road, Westley, Rhode Island.
But it's, it's been an honor. It's been a privilege and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more. I mean, 10 years ago, when I moved to town, you were on the board of finance. And having a financial background, I said, you know, let me get involved in, in the workings of the town to understand where we're at. And I, I always respected you on the board of finance because exactly all the things that you've said tonight. The ability to listen, the ability to compromise, the ability to vote for the people of Hebron, even though it may or may not have aligned with your own personal values. You knew that it, it was the best vote for the town. And, you know, you've, you've continued that, that mindset in your public service. And, and I got to tell you, I, I look up to you a lot. I really appreciate all that you've done for the town. And, and I think that your ideals and the way you've carried yourself are an excellent role model for, for people that want to participate in town government. I, I'm, I'm very happy to have served with you and, and, and glad to, I'm very glad that you, you ran when I did. And, and we got the chance to serve together.
Thanks for convincing me to continue. Thank you for those kind words. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
I think it's going to be very difficult to fill your shoes. I think as a, as a chairman of this board, I think you've, you've carried yourself with great elegance and eloquence. I think that you have gone above and beyond to include all of the board members in all of your decisions. I think at times that hasn't been done in the past and certainly hadn't been on previous boards and you really changed that. And it helped people stay engaged with you and stay engaged with the board. And in this process, I'll definitely miss our conversations because we've had some really fun ones and we've, you've really kind of, you've elevated all the fellow members of the board with you. And you've really dedicated yourself to that kind of mentorship and that guidance. So I'm very, very happy for you. You're moving back to where I was born and raised. My home state and it's beautiful and the beaches cannot compare to Connecticut. I'm very sorry. I know that's not very loyal to the state I live in now. But you'll be missed. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve.
Thank you. Very kind.
And, you know, I wish you all the best in your next chapter.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Now, as you said, a few comments of my own, you know, thank you for your dedication. You've really led the way in so many perspectives and angles. And you've really led us to be a shining example of what it is to work together. Regardless of political affiliation, party affiliation, what it is to truly work together for the betterment of the general population and the people of Hebron. You know, other governmental bodies could really take a look at what we're doing here and say, you know, there was a time when people that, you know, took those, these things aside and worked together for the betterment alone. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you for all the kind words. I appreciate it very much. And again, it's been a privilege.
And I'd like to jump in if I may.
Mr. Tanny, go ahead. You're not going to get all teary, are you?
No, not, not time. But I just, I just want to say, you know, I work for several chairman and you've, you've risen to the top with all of them in different ways and your complexity to get everybody to come to the table for the issues for the betterment of Hebron is applauded. We've had some trying times, changes in, you know, politics, COVID and, and things we, we, we were faced with some difficult things, ARPA, and you were very charismatic in how we handled that in Hebron. I always look at our report card. I consider everything a report card. We're, we're not on the front page of the review too often. And then when we are normally it's for a good reason. And under your chairmanship along as others, and I, I think that you're a credit to that and your availability, whenever there was an issue, whether it be a Saturday or a Sunday or walking your dog or even if you're up on Federal Hill, you answered your phone. So I appreciate that. And it's been a pleasure to serve underneath you and I'm open for whoever else spills the shoes, but thank you for what you did and thank you for being a, a good mentor and I wish you well in your new endeavors. You deserve it. It's not a, it's not a very popular place to be a selectman in charge of a town or chairman or any selectman at this time. It's, it's, you're not there to be somebody's friend. You're there to make the tough decisions and it's harder now than it ever has been. So Godspeed.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much. Thank you all very much. Your kindness. I appreciate it. And that moves us to ten on our agenda, which is the consent agenda, consent.
Oh, we need to.
We have to vote.
Oh, we have to vote on that. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
We actually, we can, we can skip the voting. Let's just continue.
I apologize. Good thing I'm leaving. I can't even follow the own process. Saying aye, opposed, nay, or I, and I will abstain. So go.
Dale Larson, aye.
You petted reluctantly, aye.
Very reluctantly, Tiffany Teal, aye.
Dan Lee, aye.
Thank you so much. Peter Casper will abstain. Thank you so much for your, your support and again for your kind comments. So I appreciate the reminder that we didn't vote. So we're on to consent agenda. And the consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually, may be going on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request a chair to remove a later discussion in a separate vote if necessary. Mr. Larson, could you read the motion, please?
Uh, sure. Moves the Hebrew Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted. And that would be the approval of the minutes of March 27th, 2025. Uh, that's our regular meeting in the budget workshop and then the April 3rd, 2025 regular meeting. And the tax refunds as listed. Anyone wish to pull anything out?
Mr. Larson, motion's been read. All those in favor, please sign above by saying aye, those opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain, Mr. Larson.
Dale Larson, aye.
You've petted aye.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Moves to liaison reports. I do not have anything under AHM Youth Services. Tiffany, even board of ed?
Yep. I've got a couple of quick updates. So the Ford event has been working hard to remind everyone to go out to vote at the budget referendum. We just had a lovely waving session in the center of town, of which I participated and a couple of other people in the room participated as well to ensure the budget passes on the first go. Hebron students won first, second and third place in the state's future problem solver event, which is incredible. Uh, they now go to nationals at Indiana University and they'll compete in June, June 4th through the.
That is incredible.
Yeah. Crazy. Wow. They also want to let us know that they have three therapy dogs. And two of them, Murphy and Boston came to introduce themselves to the board. So now they have three therapy dogs, which is great. And that's what I have from the board today.
Thank you so much, Mr. Larson, board of finance.
I have nothing. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Land acquisition keeps at it.
Has not met.
Hey, Claudia, Ram board of ed.
I have nothing to report.
Hey, moves us to section 12, public comment. I'll defer to my original description of the kind of structure of public comment at the beginning of the meeting. Donna, anyone online who saw for public comment?
There's nothing on.
Anyone in the audience? Okay.
We got to hear, we got to hear from her.
I just actually just want to say thank you for your service. Because as a fellow chair, from the charter commission, but more, more, more busily, the board of education, it's a lot of work. You've dedicated years to this community in town and you've done it. As Tiffany mentioned, with such grace, but like you're really like a model chair and board member who I, I appreciate and try to, I'm a model myself after. So thank you for all you do in the fall.
Very kind of you. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
I would like to thank the Charter Revision Committee for their effort and initiative as well and the time spent digging into all what they did.
I'm sorry. Can you state your name just for the record? I'm so sorry. Yeah. Just cause that way we can write it down.
Details, Jason Guido, 94 Cove Road. Uh, so thank you again for the effort initiative and just time spent going through the line items and making suggestions for a charter. And gentlemen, who are spending so much time as well, as you stated here earlier, volunteering time to.
Uh, volunteering time to make sure our community gets what they need to get. Done as far as the roofs go and the abatement of lead, like being the leaders in that, you know, that's pretty amazing. Uh, I'm new to a lot of the processes here and learning spaces and who's who and what's what and who's engaging in our community. Really inspiring to see so many people so dedicated and uh, and doing such good things for our community. Really thank you all as well for doing this uh board of selectmen work that you do other things, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional public comment. Thank you all for coming. That moves us to section 13 on our agenda.
Move to return to Hebron Board of Selectmen's meeting at 8:50.
Thank you so much. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
I'm five minutes off schedule. Awesome. Thank you so much.